Okay, let's call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, April 25th to order. If I could ask everyone to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, roll call please. Okay, so we have everybody tonight. Our agenda tonight, we will have two educational presentations, one voluminous student recognition, and second, a presentation from Dr. Thomas Moline from SEDOL. Nothing specific from the president's report. We'll have our school board, student school board reps present superintendent's report. We will then open it up for public comment. I would ask if you are going to speak to please limit your comments to three minutes. We will approve the consent vote agenda, which was reviewed earlier this month, and then have updates from program and personnel, facilities and finance. I don't believe anything from property correct. SEDOL, I think? I forget if SEDOL updated, actually. And then IASB? Okay. And then we will convene briefly for an executive session, which we'll have action afterwards.
Yes.
Okay. And that's it. Okay, so student recognition.
So although there's a large group here, this represents one group called FBLA Future Business Leaders of America from both Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School. We have Diane Phillips here to represent the entire group. So Diane, if you'd come forward and introduce the group.
Well, I'm back. This is my favorite time of year because we have the best FBLA groups at both Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School. We, uh, I'm sorry. The Vernon Hills advisors are Adam, who again, who couldn't make it with, couldn't be here tonight, Tony Isabella, and myself, and LHS advisors Kristen Conley and Loretta O'Day, couldn't be here tonight, but I know that they're sending proud wishes for our students from Libertyville tonight. We are very proud of the Vernon Hills and Libertyville FBLA students. I can summarize a little bit of the trail that got us here. We start out in January at Warren Township High School with the area competition, and from there, we participated in the state competition April 1st, no fooling, and April 2nd. And I can tell you from Vernon Hills perspective, we had 36 different areas of competition, 59 competitors, and I'm very proud to say that Vernon Hills had 33 national qualifiers. So best that we've done in many years to get that number of students. For Libertyville, I know that they had 25 members that advanced to state, and they had seven that have qualified for nationals. So as a group, we're going down together to Atlanta, Georgia, June 29th through July 2nd, and we will be representing District 128 with 40 young people that will compete, and hopefully we'll have national winners when we return back on July 3rd. So with that, I'm going to ask the students to come up so that we can recognize them. And you'll notice that two of your board reps are national qualifiers.
Hi, my name is Ashwini Deshpande, and me and my group competed in business plan.
Hi, I'm Pavani Pandrapada, and I'm a member of her group, and I also competed in business plan.
Hi, I'm Apparaj Thadiraju, and I also competed in business plan.
Hi, I'm Megan Fahey, and I competed in client service.
Hi, I'm Bridget Horvath. My group and I competed in e-business.
Hi, I'm Adi Dumara, and I also competed in e-business.
I'm Emily Karen, and I also competed in e-business.
Hi, I'm Jolie Lewis, and I competed in emerging business missions.
I'm Zachary Curzon-Burger, and I competed in accounting too.
Hi, I'm Smea Seriat, and I also competed in digital video production.
I'm Ryan Curris, I competed in business calculations.
Juan Mulcarra, and I competed in mobile application development.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Corredo, and I competed in global business.
Hi, I'm Annie Wong, I competed in global business.
Hi, my name's Josh Kitson, I also competed in global business.
Hi, I'm Gia Barbogio, and I competed in website design.
Hi, I'm Teddy Chen, and I also competed in website design.
Hi, I'm Heda Lou, and I competed in introduction to financial math.
I am Ryan King, and I competed in computer game simulation program.
Hi, I'm Michael Chauvin, and I competed in computer game simulation and program.
I'm Kevin, how was that?
Hi, I'm Derek, and my group is competing in business ethics.
Hi, I'm Nathan, I'm competing in global business.
I'm Oliver Leung, and I'm also competing in business ethics.
I'm Anna Trigger, and I'm competing in graphic design.
I'm Michael Propenas, and I'm competing in business ethics.
I'm Halo, competing 3D animation.
I'm Anitia, I'm also competing 3D animation.
Hi, I'm Leslie, I'm competing in help desk.
Hi, I'm Zachary Toski, I'm competing in making financial systems.
You can see that we have very many, we have a lot of proud parents that are here too. Again, thanks for letting us come in and celebrate on our accomplishments so far this year, and we'll be back in the fall with our national winners.
All right, we've got one more recognition, right? Okay, we have one more recognition, so we ask everybody to stay and then we'll let you go. But let me say this for all the parents that are here, whether you're with FBLA or the other group that we're going to recognize tonight. This is the most fun that we have during the year, and I speak for all of us administratively, and certainly the board on this. But we know that these great kids have had a lot of support along the way, and we thank you for your support of your children, all the times that you've drawn them back and forth to school and to events, because we know that they're involved in more than FBLA, most of them, because I see a lot of the students here multiple times during years. So we want to thank you for your support of your children, your support of the school district, and the result of that is, you know, right in front of us. So students, let's help us and the board give your parents a round of applause. And now, let's give you a round of applause. Okay, so we have one more recognition, and then, of course, you can stay for the whole board meeting if you want. We always, you know, we're always happy to have you, but we're not going to make you do that. So let us do our own recognition, and then we'll let everybody go and you can cool off, okay? Thank you, congratulations. All right, Al, you want to set us up for your next one?
So we have one more special recognition, and our Director of Special Education, Kelly Hardwood, is going to make that presentation. Kelly?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Kelly Hardwood, I'm your new Director of Special Services. It's very nice to meet all of you tonight. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce to you Andrew Robinson, Libertyville High School graduate of the class of 2013. Though he fulfilled our district's requirements for graduation, Andrew continued his path as a student participating in the SEDOL transition program through this past December 2015. In transition programming, Andrew engaged in a variety of experiences to prepare him for post-secondary life. Andrew has been described by his teachers as a student who is extremely kind, mature, dependable, organized, and independent. He offers to help anyone around him, and has a strong and diligent work ethic. Not surprisingly, Andrew strives to have a career helping others in the future. It is for these reasons that Andrew was nominated by his SEDOL teacher to the North Suburban Chapter Number 336 of the Illinois Council for Exceptional Children for the Larry Potterman Best I Can Be Award. This award is presented to those who possess excellence of character, kindness, and empathy towards others, as well as those who have high motivation. He will receive this award during the chapter's Exceptional Children's Week Award Ceremony on Sunday, May 1st. We are very proud of all of our current and former District 128 students for their accomplishments, and tonight I am particularly proud to acknowledge Andrew, as he has earned a great recognition from a wonderful organization. Congratulations to you, Andrew, and we wish you all the best as you continue. Career aspirations as a counselor or an art therapist.
My daughter's best friend.
You better get that selfie.
Thank you, Adi. Okay. All right, next. And by the way, it's okay if you want to depart now, so we'll give you a minute to do that.
Do?
No, you have to stay, unfortunately, Stephen. We are mindful of, you know, the start of the hockey game, so. All right, well, it gives me good pleasure to introduce to you to my good colleague and friend, Dr. Thomas Moline. Tom is the Superintendent for the Special Education District of Lake County. SEDOL serves 32 local school districts in Lake County as a cooperative education system designed to meet the needs of students with disabilities. SEDOL programs, classes, and related services act as an extension of all member districts' continuum of special education services for students in kindergarten through 12th grade, and it runs an extensive array of transition programming for young adults through their 22nd birthday. District 128 currently has 27 students directly served in SEDOL programming and classrooms. However, hundreds of our students are provided additional direct and indirect services every day in Libertyville and Vernon Hills High Schools. The American Association of School Administrators, AASA, recently gave national recognition to SEDOL's Weekend Backpack Program, which is coordinated by staff but run in all aspects by students, as a program that exemplifies the tenets of the organization's Coordinated School Health Initiative. In this program, students collect, sort, organize, and distribute healthy foods, meals, and eating tips to families and students in need. The vocational, social, problem-solving, and everyday aspects that are integrated into this program give students real-life experiences and skills that will carry them into their post-secondary endeavors. Dr. Moline will present to us this evening on the programs and services provided to District 128 students, as well as share a new update related to how SEDOL is progressively monitoring and responding to the needs of all of the districts in Lake County that it serves. So without further ado, my good friend and colleague, Dr. Tom Moline. Tom?
Thank you, Dr. Moline, very much. And thank you to the board for putting SEDOL on the agenda tonight. I'm going to make this quick, because I know it's not the best night to have a presentation before the board. A lot of you are Hawks fans, I know that. Hawks, by the way. Oh, and one more thing. On the way over here, a brilliant neon rainbow. Is that a good sign?
That's a good sign.
That's a good sign. Karen Lundstedt is our representative, or I should say, your representative on the governing board. We've had great backing support by District 128 over decades, and I'm here to tell you a little bit about the extension of your school district, which is simply SEDOL. Oh, do I need to point this at you? No, anywhere in the room, you're welcome. So this is the update for this school year. This is the 14th presentation I've done. I go about every other year in the 32 member districts, and so providing nothing major happens, I'll probably see you in two years. That's the way it's been averaging around the area. I'd like to have SEDOL pay a strong connection to our member districts. I know that boards change in terms of membership. This might be the first time you've really seen an update out of SEDOL from the SEDOL superintendent. SEDOL is 56 years old this year, 25 districts back in 1960. Today, we are 32. And SEDOL remains, over the last two decades, the largest and most comprehensive special education cooperative in the state of Illinois. In looking at other states and comparing over the five years I've been at SEDOL, SEDOL is actually one of the largest special education cooperatives and most comprehensive in all the Midwest of the United States. Some people be very proud of the school districts in Lake County, Illinois. SEDOL's mission remains the same over decades, and our vision also remains the same over decades. Our programs and services can really be brought down to six basic categories: high therapy, separate center programs for students with significant challenges. Your district subscribes to some of those. Sector classrooms located close to our member districts where two, three, four, maybe five districts share a classroom for students with special needs, typically students with significant challenges, but it's a cost-efficient arrangement, and then the district can send two or three of those students to a collective classroom. It might be certain nine or 10 students total. Far more cost-efficient than running a program for two or three students on your own. Itinerant traveling services in and out of member districts for any variety of special needs. Contractual therapy and diagnostic services, and early childhood assessment services, which is changing, and I'll focus on that in the last minute or so of the presentation tonight. And then a variety of other specialized services that come and go depending upon what the local districts tell us they need. Kelly Hardwood is your coordinator of special services here. We try and keep in regular contact with our coordinators to let us know what is topical or what is important that SEDOL could serve even a handful of districts at the current time. Sometimes those things come off the plate, they're no longer needed by another district. But we remain flexible when I say other specialized services. Here's the litany of SEDOL classroom programs. I'm not going to go into the breakdown of all of these, other than to say our programs are designed primarily for students with significant needs. In some cases, mild conditions in which a sector program could serve the needs of the student in a collective sector program, not a separate facility. Building-based classrooms, we have 80 sector classrooms out in 14 member districts. We have 31 of those classrooms. If you put SEDOL all together with the five facilities we operate, and the sector classrooms, and our complement of about 650 employees, SEDOL is actually one of the largest school districts in Lake County, Illinois. Thing is, we're spread all over the place, so you never realize that. And only once a year do we get the opportunity to have everybody come together for a beginning-of-the-year staff meeting. Then it's prodigious in terms of the size of that crowd. Even I'm awed at all responsibility facing me one time a year. That's the only opportunity we get during the course of school year. Laramont School, the newest facility and our flagship facility, built and put into service in 2010. Very high therapy, high-intensity service for students with the most significant disabilities, medical fragility in particular, and low cognitive functioning. There are five students from District 128 who attend Laramont School. Gates Lake School is for students with behavior disorders, preschool through eighth grade, actually. You don't subscribe because you're a high school history. However, you do subscribe to Sibley-Lash Academy. Same service system for students with behavior disorders, but for high school-level students, grades nine through 12. The intent of both of those facilities is to return the student back to their neighborhood or to their home district, we should say. Sometimes that student's only with us a semester. Sometimes they might be with us a school year or two, but the intent of our high-therapy programs for behavior-disordered students is to deal with the issue, work with the family, get the relevant skills and behaviors under control, and back to the local district. We don't hold our students in media programs very long if we can help it. We do graduate some students from Sibley-Lash Academy, about a dozen per year. Largest graduation class I've witnessed in the last five years has been 20. So with over 120 students, there's a lot of rotation of students out of Sibley-Lash. You have two students by my phone today at Sibley-Lash Academy. John Powers Center is for the deaf and hearing impaired, based in Vernon Hills, in the Hall of Learning School District. That's for preschool, eighth grade. Graves Lake North High School Deaf-in-Program is a group of five rooms at Graves Lake North embedded into that high school, and that's the extension of John Powers for students who are deaf or are in the area. I don't have any students recorded attending. But we have, and where they're ready to serve, where you have the best student. Transition Center itself, this is where District 128 utilizes a lot of SEDOL service. Andrew, who you just recognized, is a prime example of that. I'm surprised to see him here tonight. I didn't know that he'd be joining in. Nice touch, a nice segue to lead him in. But you do have, by our count, approximately 20 students attending transition programs. 12 come to, underlined, to the Transition Center here. We also have community-based transition for students who can also benefit from part of their day in the work sector. And so I believe you have seven at the Atkinson Site, which is to my left, and you have, oh, you have 12 at the Seymour Site, and three at the Underline Site. So approximately 21, 22 students, but they're engaged in classroom programming and adult training for the purposes of job, holding a job. Those work locations are in 20 spots around Lake County. In some cases, students turning age 22 and aging out of special education stay with the employer. We're finding that more often, in that students who have been left those transition work sites for two or three years get picked up and get paid for employment. Our biggest location today in terms of that happening is at the VA Hospital in the Great Lakes Naval Training Station. Students there can work their way into a job starting at $17 to $18 an hour, and full benefits in terms of health insurance. That's major for a student who's been in special education most of their life. That's starting to happen the last couple of years in Lake County. Just as a sideline, the Regional Office of Ed does have a Safe Schools Program for students who are expelled or long-term suspended. This is not a special education operation per se, but the ROE came to SEDOL about a decade ago and asked SEDOL if they would operate the program. So we do. And there are some students who have been in special education previously who are attending the school. We employ all of the teachers and the administration for the operation of the school, which serves not just SEDOL member districts, but also all high school and unit districts in Lake County, Illinois. And we're happy to do that. Sector classrooms, they're in 14 districts throughout the SEDOL service area. This is one in Woodland School, Hutterfield Elementary. This is a high school program. Child care is the theme of the day at that location. It's actually a particular, which is about a year old. But the programs and sector, again, try and locate students as close as they can to their neighborhood or resident school district. Lucky for us, District 128 houses a phenomenal program right here in this building for students who need education and life skills support, and Karen Martin is a teacher who feels more like she's a part of the high school staff here than SEDOL in 148, which is exactly where we want to be. Itinerant contractual services is the litany of services that many cooperatives provide in our state, whereby we can hire a full-time person who shared a lunch several districts. The most cost-efficient way of providing some services for a district that just needs two or three hours a week, some type of service, is to utilize a cooperative, reform a cooperative, so that they can employ people who launch to come and work. You can't get people in these specialized areas for part-time. You have to offer full-time employment. Even today, some of those positions are difficult to fill. But SEDOL's been doing that for decades, and that's also one of our areas of support. We have about 80 employees in this group of services that move out into the member districts from SEDOL on a daily basis to meet the needs of students. On part-time employment in a specific location, they move to other locations for the rest of their work life. Okay, the latest developments in SEDOL have to do with a reformat in terms of a priority system, SEDOL operates with cooperates, and the way that we fund it. In 2014-15, all of the member districts of SEDOL came together, primarily superintendents, business managers, and coordinators of special education, to determine what's important about SEDOL in terms of protecting it, and what might we be enticing the local districts to consider operating on their own. What we got from that stringent series of meetings over the course of actually 18 months, we started in the year prior, really went to work in 2014-15, was a system of prioritization that would need the programs that would be, continue to be supported in the manner that we currently do to a cooperative measure. We had data before we began in terms of surveying all the districts on what they needed, and they also gave us a lot of written testimonials, 31 pages of that back in 11-point font, which, as we sifted through it, gave us themes beyond just the questionnaires that we were testing. The recommendations were generated actually from five committees. The recommendations were eventually approved by the governing board back in August of this school year, and those recommendations commenced on July 1st, 2016. Here they are. In terms of program intensity, the Level 3 program is the highest priority. The way that we've operated our programs the last few years is if it's a Level 3 program, it's a program for the most severely involved students. Service Level 3 programs will not change in terms of the way we have historically funded those programs by member districts putting in, into the hat, coverage for 60% of the operation of the program. There's a tuition base on that afterwards, but it's very low because a cooperative is underwriting over half of the program operations. In large part, that has to do, Level 3 programs have to do with separate facility programs and some sector programs, including transition programs and programs for autistic impaired students. When we look at what you're subscribing to at 128, all of your services are Level 3 programs. So nothing has changed for you, other than by the mechanism we're employing, you are going to get more of your federal funding back, operate your own programs here. Now, let's explain that in a minute. Level 2 programs are primarily sector programs, still of importance, but about half or a little over half of the districts utilize those programs. Those will get an offset of 30% of my TDA funded through the contributions of member districts, but tuition will go up a little bit. but tuition will go up a little bit when we start operating those programs. Level One programs are programs that very few districts have sent students to historically over the last five to ten years. And in fact, the mechanism that we're about to employ starting July 1st has already had this effect. We only have two classrooms remaining out of twelve that SEDOL is operating this year that we will continue to mention. Those districts have decided that they will in fact take the enticement because there's no IDEA funding for them, and they will operate those programs on their own. So the system's done what the collective groups decided to do, was to try and fund programs that have a high priority, as well as would have, and entice local districts to operate programs for mildly impaired students back into the local district. And the effects of all of this are that districts, the thirty-two member districts, receive seventeen percent more of their IDEA funding back next year, starting July 1st. You were contributing sixty percent, the contribution rate will actually be forty-three percent. That means you're going to have additional money coming back to your district to operate your own special education programs and services. We also found, and this was after we put the math together, and it wasn't a perceived event, but Level Three programs' tuition will decrease by seven percent. We added incentive to implement this process. Service Level Two programs, by the nature of not getting half of their former IDEA funding, will see an increase in operations of approximately six point seven percent. Given again, those are primarily sector programs in which a district is sending only one, two, maybe three students, and that program is operating in their district or neighboring district at full capacity, normally nine or ten students in a classroom, and still a very cost-efficient way of operating a program, even if it gets a slight increase in terms of their tuition. Service Level One programs would raise by twenty percent in terms of their tuition, and as I said, those districts are already bringing those students back into their member districts. Always get the question at the end of our presentation, where is SEDOL going from this point forward? In large part, we're looking to provide more in terms of sector programming, serving students with significant impairments closer to home in what would be a shared program amongst two, three, four districts, in a specific part of SEDOL, to the north, south, east, or west. We see more of that programming open up. A very rapidly increasing area of programming for SEDOL is in serving autistic impaired students. Since I came to SEDOL, we started with three programs, so there were three programs for autistic impaired students. We have twelve programs now. The lives of students identified as autistic impaired and need districts referring to SEDOL, high-intensity head care of the service continues to increase the need for classrooms. So as much as we decreased in some areas, districts bringing it back, we're just about stabilized in terms of the actual number of district and sector programs, thirty-one classrooms going into actually, we might be at thirty-two, actually one more when they operate the issue because autism continues to bring students into SEDOL service. Training's always been a feature of SEDOL, but we've really increased it in terms of dealing with students with behavior disorders, nonviolent privacy prevention, preventing situations from occurring before they ever come up in a classroom, especially working with students with behavioral issues. And then assessing students for instructional growth. Your district, everyone else in the state of Illinois now needs to add a growth factor to teacher and administrator evaluation. And consequently, SEDOL having expertise protecting and working with students with significant disabilities is out into the local districts helping for purposes of assessing students who are hard to assess in special education programs. And then really any other area, assistive technology has really brought things in. Applications on mobile devices is something that SEDOL has really expanded in terms of service to local districts. Our assistive technology team that supports students who need a voice and who don't have adequate speech has opened up wonderful opportunities for student purposes of SEDOL coming in to assess students and giving them a device to use. So that's it, I'll leave you with the words of Helen Cowherd, that really describes SEDOL in its operation the last fifty-six years. Alone, we can do so little, and together, we can do so much. SEDOL continues as the most comprehensive cooperative in the state of Illinois, and thanks to your support, participation, we hope to remain that way for many years to come. Thank you.
I do reserve questions if you have any.
Anybody have any questions, Alex?
We've seen a district or two pull out and say, we'll take it from here on our own. But I'm struck by things, I don't remember since the Philidomite babies, suddenly we have Zika babies, and who knows what's next, and these are challenges. Even though you have a broad spectrum, these districts that pull out and said, we can handle it, I can't believe they can handle it. They're stranding their investments, for one thing, if you made this great offering, and then secondly, is there a path back for them? Because I can't believe they could ever do what you do.
Yeah, thank you for the question. My position is if ever they want to come back to SEDOL, it's certainly a decision by the member districts who exist at the time on the governing board, but I would readily welcome them back. Three districts who a year ago went on their own have the means to operate their own cooperative. They really do.
With what they know now?
I'm sorry?
With what they know today?
Correct, correct. But they have the capacity to run their own, and they operated for almost six years in preparing for that situation. High School District invested four million dollars into a wing of the high school, and made for a very nice situation, which is comparable to what SEDOL can provide in our high-intensity programs. And they did what they really wanted to do. They wanted to serve their students in their resident school or their neighborhood school, and to defray the transportation going back and forth. There are other districts who can't do that. We do have one leaving us out of Fox Lake, but they've been so tied to McHenry County that they just intend to join another cooperative. That's the way it goes. And to see if they can't run a little less distance to the operations and a little less cost initially. But that's it for now. I didn't like the idea of looking over my shoulder every June to see who might leave, but that whole process of refiguring, reprioritizing, and refinancing SEDOL was all done with the full intent of making sure we try and research all districts to be able to serve them far into the future. And with the exception of that northernmost district, I think we've done that for the foreseeable future. SEDOL needs to listen and to respond, and I think that we have done that to assure that the thirty-one districts who remain starting next year feel that they're getting a very good deal for the investment at SEDOL. But again, we are specialists. Six decades in running really does give our system a leg up in terms of having a lot of people with a lot of expertise to deal with situations which are effective. Our BD programs in particular are very effective. We compare ourselves to some of the private facilities in the area who run some competitive business and work by far better in terms of the family support system and moving all of that training into the home because you need to bridge all of that, not just at the school level, in terms of making a student understand these are the things they need to do, not only in school, but outside of school, and in the community for that matter. So a lot of work in that particular area shows. For those students who stay with us for a long time, Laramont School in particular, that's what parents want. I was a little surprised when Laramont was built. I came the year after, but parents wanted the high-intensity, high-therapy services, and in terms of getting all that in one facility, I had never seen anything in five states that I've been around, one in particular, the state of Michigan, compares to what they've got. So the member districts need to be proud of the fact they've got a system that really does the best of service possible given today's thinking and the investments that they make in those programs and services. We don't want to see a member district leave ever again. And we're going to continue to try and make sure we hit that high-quality marker to make sure they understand that's the best investment they can make for their life.
The state budget, or lack thereof, is putting a big strain on many social service organizations, and I'm wondering if that is having a peripheral drain or pressure on SEDOL?
It is on student services when they leave SEDOL. When they turn twenty-two, more parents are cringing today than ever because the backup system for adults has really declined in the past year in regard to that level of support within the community and in job stats. Within SEDOL, we feel a little protective in that we see no real diminishing in terms of our funding mechanisms. We are waiting to see if any special ed categoricals are not paid on the quarterly basis this year. So far, two quarters have been paid, we're looking for that third, and we're hoping in the summer we get that fourth. Those can make a big difference in our budget if they don't come in. So we're mindful of the fact that that still may affect us even though they gave an educational budget for public schools this year.
Thank you. And Tom, just to take the funding, you know, one more step forward. We've talked before many times about IDEA funding at the federal level, and it's never met the forty percent threshold in the original legislation. Do you know where the federal funding percentage was now? Maybe it was down as low?
About twenty-one percent.
About twenty-one percent? Of a forty percent obligation at Congress set back in the day?
It was down to about thirteen and a half percent at one point back in the nineteen eighties. Forty years of the promise and the promise never being up to fulfillment. To the point that I have on occasion gone to Washington DC to meet with anybody who would listen in regard to not making the promise. Because you know, over forty years, you can lose the institutional memory of that commitment. I have to remind fellow superintendents new to the profession in our districts that that was a promise back in nineteen seventy-six. So I'm the old guy anymore, it's my forty-second year in public ed. But I remember when it was passed in nineteen seventy-six, I was a special ed teacher for three years at that point, we were jubilant. They came in at about twenty-eight percent back then, and it's never been any better since. So we do remind our legislators, there's a commitment to special populations that has never been met.
And the thing with the federal money is if they funded that at forty percent, fortunately here in our area, Congressman Dole and Senator Kirk have been more than willing to engage in a conversation and see that need, and we've been lucky up here in Lake County. I'm not sure that's true everywhere. But if the federal government funded IDA at forty percent, many of the problems, financial problems in school districts across the country are having, would be wiped out. And it would take pressure off of the state government because those federal funds would be coming in. So now the state has to attempt, and locally, we have to attempt to make up that gap. And if that gap's lighter, then you know, our obligation is more moving forward, so.
The congressmen you just mentioned have agreed in principle to the building of a ramp over a ten-year period to go from twenty percent currently up to the forty percent. They know you can't do it overnight, it would really shock the federal budget. This is in the education budget, which is again only five percent of all of federal expenditures, but they've committed to a ramp to get us there over a decade. Unfortunately, that hasn't really been codified in any type of real movement towards law in the state, or I'm sorry, in the nation. So we continue to knock on their doors.
Okay, thanks very much.
You've been great.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you very much.
Very quickly, I know you met Kelly earlier, but Kelly has been so busy since she started in July 1st. We all apologize for that. As you know, our longtime director of special education here was Kathleen. Kathleen did just an incredible job, and we were so happy to have Kelly join us because she just brings so much to the district. She came from two-eleven, and has an incredible background and an incredible energy and an incredible love for students. So Kelly, why don't you stand up and let us all give you a round of applause? Welcome.
Thank you, grateful to be here.
It's a pleasure working with you.
Yeah, great.
All right, thanks very much. Student school board, guys?
So we'll go first. To begin with our academics, the exams are starting up next week, and they last the first two weeks of May. So there's a lot of students at LHS. I think the number keeps increasing each year, and it's that are signing up to take the exams for college credit. So so many people are busy preparing for that. On Friday, April 8th, a few weeks ago, LHS students competed in a Family Career and Community Leaders of America State Competition, and they competed in Culinary, Child Development, and Clothing Construction competitions, and they did pretty well there. Three LHS students received honors in the 2016 Illinois Association of Teachers of English Poetry Pros Contest. Those students were Anna Lagukey, Sophie Richardson, and Annika Okinson. They were all recognized, and I think there were a lot of first-place recognitions in that contest this year. Moving on, a lot of seniors have begun their Ever Engaging and Fun ABC Countdown to end the year. So we're, like, all the seniors have the opportunity to dress up to like a certain theme that's decided by the class. For example, today was Camo Day for C, so it's just fun to see that school spirit and senior class coming together for the end of the year. FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America competed at a state competition, like we recognized here tonight, and seven of our LHS students qualified to go on to the national competition. The LHS Infant Development students toured Condel's New Life Center to get real world experience in childcare recently, and so that just gave them, I like the community involvement that encompassed, so it's great to hear that. Also, about a hundred and thirty students from our human physiology classes and our med cats club at the high school traveled to Athleti Christ Medical Center in Oaklawn to do un-aortic heart valve replacement surgery. So they got to, they got the opportunity to meet all of the doctors and professionals there involved in the surgery, and they asked questions during the three-hour-long surgery. So I wasn't there, but I feel like that's got to be an experience as a high school to observe. Moving on, our French three students raised money with a bake sale and used that money to purchase gifts to send to children in the Desolene Orphanage in Haiti. So they bought candy, supplies, and toys, and just necessities for the kids. The LHS Theater Department presented the student-directed One Act Play Festival on April 1st and 2nd, and I just, from like all the hype from kids in the theater department, it sounded like amazing. It's always fun to see our own students direct their own plays, they're short in many ways. Two weeks ago, on April 15th, the CRC celebrated Senior Decision Day, where the majority of seniors had the chance to show off their decisions and their plans for next year, whether it be at college or Gap Years, like wherever they're going. And this year, it was run by the CRC and parent volunteers, and we just brought a lot of snacks and our graduation shirts that was brought by the administration and photo ops for all our seniors. So it was just a really big celebration, it was fun to see where everyone's going out in the world. And lastly, the several seniors have already begun trying out for their roles as graduation speakers at our graduation. So that's exciting, we find out at the end of this week, and we have a lot signed up, so it's fun.
Okay, so really quick, I'm just going to talk about athletics. So spring sports are all now in full swing, and it's been really nice because all the teams have been able to practice outside, and it's been more fun to go to the games now that they're warmer, so. Yeah, we're looking forward to seeing how they progress throughout the season when the competition starts getting more intense. And then, spring sports awards banquet will be held this upcoming month in May. So now for extracurriculars, prom is less than a month away. It will be held on May 21st at the Shedd Aquarium, so we're all really excited for that. Student Council has been working really hard to finalize all these plans, and the plans for the night are that students have exclusive access to look around the oceanarium and amphibian exhibits while there. And I think it's like right when we get there for the first hour, so you can like look around the museum, and there's not going to be anyone else there but our students, so. And then dinner is going to be served in the Caribbean Reef Exhibit. So while you're eating dinner, you're like surrounded by the aquariums and stuff, so it'll be like a really unique experience to see the Shedd and everything. And then, the LHS Color Run is going to be held on May 7th, and we're hoping to reach out to local schools such as Carmel, Vernon Hills, and then other like middle schools and the wider community to gain more support. like middle schools and the wider community to gain more support for the organization. And the organization that the proceeds are going to benefit is the Michael Manners Foundation, which is a local organization that gives financial aid to those dealing with a brain cancer diagnosis. Student Council has been working really hard to fundraise and receive sponsors as well as participants for the event. And then if you guys are interested, you can sign in or sign up on the LHS web store, which is just on the LHS homepage. And it's going to be really fun. So if you have kids or anything, we love it. And then last Saturday, Student Council held an Earth Day cleanup where over 20 kids volunteered to pick up trash on 176 from Butterfield to Milwaukee. The event was organized by the freshman and sophomore classes, but it was really nice to see because it wasn't only freshmen and sophomores that participated. All of Student Council from various grades helped to participate with these students. So it was nice to see the whole school uniting to clean up for Earth Day. This month, the Special Services Team worked with Bridge Group and Best Buddies to do some activities in honor of Autism Awareness Month. We worked to spread awareness by posting informational papers on lockers. We featured a video about autism on the Week of Wildcats, and we handed out autism awareness stickers to the students, and a lot of people have them on their Chromebook like Dr. Scott does. And we also encouraged people to wear blue on Fridays to help spread awareness for autism. And then lastly, Best Buddies had a very successful Spread the Words and the Word campaign last month to discourage people from using the R-word. The video made by the club had a lot of positive feedback from the school and community. And I have some stats right here. So there were 273 likes, 123 shares, over 10,500 views, and 16 comments on the video. So yeah, it had a lot of positive feedback, and we're going to show that to you tonight later after everyone's done talking. So yeah.
All right, so in VHHS news, we have a lot of recognitions tonight. So to start out, Kevin Bose was named our 2016 Sons of the American Revolution Good Citizenship Award recipient. So we're very happy for them. And also, we had several awards in a recent Chinese student essay contest, including 10 students who placed in the second category and 17 students who placed in the third category. We also had several students place gold, silver, and bronze in the German Language Contest for a total of 16 students who placed among the German II honors, German III honors, and German IV honors in our AP class. And among them, Junior Martin Bolotin won a four-week, all-expense-paid summer study trip in Germany this June, which is very exciting because he was actually selected as a national winner after scoring in the 99th percentile on the Level 3 of the 2016 exam. So we're very happy for him as well. And also, we recently had over 100 juniors that were inducted into NHS recently, so good for them. And also, we actually had VHHS Junior Akash Sadi, who spent the last summer researching human tissue 3D printing at Northwestern University's Feinberg School of Medicine. So this research has been approved in a scientific journal, and he's been published among other PhD scholars with this new research. So and then also, we had students Yasmin Abdullah and Serena Panos who were recognized in the Illinois Principals Association Lake Region Honors Breakfast. And we also had two groups for our activism fair. They researched a current issue that's going on in the world that's detrimental to certain groups, and they present on this issue. So the two groups that were chosen were one on Pacific pollution and the other one was on the unknown genocide. We also had several students who qualified for a photography contest, Jade Goldofsky, Adriana Tangone, and Dicklin Hellheller. We also had five juniors who will advance their projects to the Illinois State History Fair on May 5th. And those students are Sarah Fortman, Joanne Kang, Virat Reddy, Justin Beetzel, and Cole Gilliam. So congratulations to Dr. Gilliam for Cole advancing. We also have five students from FCC LA who got a gold or silver medal in their respective events. And actually, I don't know if you guys saw down in the foyer, but there are two dresses that are displayed, and they each won an award for those dresses that they made. And then also, we, this past Thursday, we actually hosted the North Suburban Conference Arts Show, and it included works from over 14 schools. And I actually had the honor of one of my works being recognized in that show, so it was very exciting. And the last thing I have to say is that Senior Day is this Friday, so we're all going to wear our senior spirit and for our colleges this Friday.
But Senior Day, that means you're going to be in school Friday, right?
Yes.
Okay, it's not that Senior Day.
Right.
All right, in club and academic team news, lots more recognition. Our Junior State of America Midwest Spring State Convention was held last weekend in Schaumburg. And Junior Hersh Nanjia, the current Vernon Hills Chapter President, was elected to serve his next year's Midwest Lieutenant Governor. Other members recognized for exceptional speaker awards include juniors Ellis Guidemack, Oliver Long, Michael Capinas, and Abirah Ram, and sophomore Nikhil Manitani. Approximately 30 students from the Vernon Hills Chapter of Junior State of America met with Congressman Bob Dole on Tuesday, April 5th, in Vernon Hills Library right here. Our Vernon Hills math team has been preparing for next weekend's state meet against Liberty High School, among others, down at the University of Illinois InterVanish Champagne. Senior Tommy Malunchik qualified for the National Chemistry Olympiad Exam, which was held in Loyola University on Friday, April 22nd. The exam was five hours long with multiple choice section, a free response section, and a lab practical. Our results will be announced sometime this week, and the next stage is the international competition held this summer in Georgia, the country, not the state. In sports news, more recognition, Senior Jared Bennett was named as part of the all-tournament team at the Warren High School Boys Volleyball Tournament two weekends ago. He was chosen as one of the top 10 players across 25 different teams that competed in this tournament. Eight different fall sports varsity teams have recently earned IHSA Academic Achievement honors. This includes girls' and boys' cross-country, girls' and boys' golf, boys' soccer, girls' tennis, girls' volleyball, and girls' swimming dive. Senior girls' soccer player Erin Vandemark was recently nominated as a finalist for the Chicago Tribune's April Athlete of the Month. We've had a few different athletes throughout the year nominated for that. It's pretty awesome. The girls' badminton program has officially started up this season for this year. The program currently has 26 members now participating and has already begun IHSA competitions against other schools in the area. Senior Kimberly Cameron, who recently committed to U of I next year, will be part of the U of I Illionettes Dance Team in the fall, among several other Vernon Hills graduates. In fine arts news, the Fine Arts Festival will be held on May 20th. That includes presentations from all fine arts departments, followed by the annual a cappella concert. Last year, we sold out the Studio Theatre, so get there early. You don't want to miss it. Is He Dead?, a play by Mark Twain, is the spring play being performed this weekend in the Studio Theatre, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:30. And the Choir Cabaret Concert will be held on May 12th in the auditorium with the theme of post-70s musicals. Acts and performances include selections from Les Mis, Wicked, Avenue Q, and many other musicals. And in other fun news, today was Xmas Day. We're doing the Alphabet Countdown Z to A backwards, and so a lot of us wore Christmas sweater today, on the hottest day of the years of our lives.
Okay, other than that, is anything going on? Great job.
You guys got to play the video?
I love their funny.
He's a good friend to me.
Energy.
Friendly and fun.
Stonky.
They are great friends, and I'm loving him as well.
Beautiful.
Oh, thank you.
He's really funny.
Spencer is a nice, friendly guy.
He's got a special ed face.
You just touched my...
I could say that she's very lovely at what she does for me.
Okay, while we're on the subject, Mary, I just want to acknowledge all your hard work with E-Pause every week because I know a lot of those things were mentioned, and I look forward to that at the end of every week. And some of those things look really exciting, especially watching the open heart surgery. And I'm like, wow, that's pretty cool for a group of people in high school. So keep up the great work.
Superintendent's report. It's almost impossible to believe that there's more good news than that, but there is. So this is always, again, the fun part of our meetings together. LHS and VHHS have received Silver Medal status in the U.S. News and World Report 2016 Best High School Rankings that were released last week. Both LHS and VHHS continue to rank in the top 2% of all high schools in the entire United States. LHS ranks 18th in Illinois and 554th in the nation, while Vernon Hills ranks 21st in Illinois and 588th in the nation. And I would point out, when you take out the eight or nine highly selective Chicago public schools, then you can see we're again very close to the top 10 in Illinois. LHS and VHHS were recognized based on their performance on state assessments, graduation rates, and how well that each school prepares students for college. So we're very proud of our students, of course, and the principals and the teachers and the support staff at each building. And we have great teachers and administrators at the building. And LHS chemistry teacher Sheri Roots received a surprise visit from the Golden Apple Foundation last week. Each year, the organization presents the Golden Apple Award for Excellence in Teaching to 10 outstanding teachers in the state. Sheri is one of the esteemed recipients for 2016. As a recipient, Sheri becomes a Fellow of the Golden Apple Academy of Educators, a distinguished group that engages in activities that expand teaching excellence through various initiatives. And Sheri will be doing some outwork next year as part of that, which is supported by the foundation. But I very much appreciated Marina inviting me over to be a part of that. That was very exciting. She didn't know that she was a finalist. And to tell you how cool our kids are, so we all went up, went in the classroom, the Golden Apple people were there, they're in one of her classes. Her kids just, you know, very, very excited. So all the kids down the hall heard all the clapping, and they all started clapping and, you know, being really excited, in a good way, supporting even though they didn't know exactly what was happening. So and Sheri was very, very touched and moved. Her parents were able to join us for this celebration. Phenomenal. And I would make one link with Sheri, which is important, I think, for our community to know. Sheri has been supported in some of her innovative work by 13, this will go onto 28 Foundation for Learning Grants. So Sheri's a very creative teacher. And particularly early in the process, there were years where Sheri won multiple grants to support some of the creative things that she does in the classroom. And it's obvious that her students, it's obvious that her students love her. So congratulations to Sheri. And also, LHS Associate Principal Ray Albin has been named the Illinois Principal Association Lake Region Assistant Principal of the Year. He was recognized at IPA Words Breakfast held earlier at Vernon Hills High School. So congratulations to Ray, much deserved there. The LHS Worldwide Youth in Science and Engineering, the WISE team finished fourth in the Unlimited Division of the Illinois Academic Challenge Day Finals on Thursday, April 14th at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. Individual medalists included Elliott Stonkey, first in physics and second in math, Daniel Zhao, second in physics and fifth in computer science, Jason G., third in computer science, Ryan Bogan, fifth in computer science, and Hannah Loitzso, who was sixth in chemistry. Other team members contributing to the overall team results were Carl Gartner, Sam Brayton, Michelle Ye, Suraj Randon Ron, Leah Sekan, Katie Stonkey, David Stone, Louis Wang, Emma Williams. The team is sponsored by Pete Dawson and Dave Kreutz. Five juniors will advance three projects to the Illinois State History Fair, which I think one of the students mentioned earlier, on May 5th in Springfield. The state qualifiers in their projects are Sarah Fortman and Joanne Kang, Chinatown of Chicago, Virat Reddy, Calum Met Harbor, and Justin Beetzel and Cole Gilliam, the Iroquois Theater Fire. So congratulations to all them. The LHS Wind Ensemble and Symphonic Wins each received superior ratings for their outstanding performances at the recent Chicagoland Invitational Concert Band Festival on April 16th at Dr. Gilliam's alma mater, Hershey High School. And I had the great pleasure to attend that. My daughter's a senior in the Wind Ensemble, and both groups were phenomenal, as we expect from our fine arts. Unbelievable. On April 5th, five VHHS students competed in the Family Career and Community Leaders of America State Competition in Springfield. Again, individuals, in apparel construction, gold medal. And most outstanding was Mandy Gilchrist, Silver Medal, went to Daisy Castillo. In food production, Relish Trade, a gold medal. And outstanding award went to Warren DePietro. And in pastry arts, a decorated cookie, gold medal. And most outstanding was Amanda Varela. And so Silver Medal went to Mylon Aguilar. Fifteen VHHS students competed in the Family Career and Community Leaders of America State Competition held on April 18th. Individuals receiving awards including, included clothing construction in the Star Event, Anna Mackey, who earned a gold medal in most outstanding. She also qualifies to compete at nationals this summer. And Ki Ra Pan earned Silver Medal. Children's Weatherford Category, Brooke Zant, Mallory Pacquelin, Nicole Axe, Barbara Garcia Stam, Kirsten Thompson, and Maggie Riesley earned gold medals. In preschool lesson category, Emily Jenner, Becca Richter, and Julia Therau earned gold medals. And in cake decorating, Rupi Montoya, Mia Clark, and Elisa McHale earned Silver Medals, and Amy Flanagan earned a Bronze Medal. So that concludes, you know, the really great news tonight. So again, congratulations to everyone. And this is always an exciting time of the year. I'm sure in May, we're going to have a lot more student recognition as some of the teams wrap up their seasons. It's also great to see badminton get started at our buildings, and it's going to be really cool to watch those programs develop at both of the schools. Okay, next on the superintendent's report tonight, unfortunately, we have to actually get back to business now. In your board packet, we have given you the proposed committee and board meeting schedule for next year. Although we haven't marked on the agenda to vote tonight, usually take a month just to look at it. Gives you guys a chance and also us one more time to troubleshoot that. Bose sent us a note earlier that our board meeting Monday, the January 2017 date, is the same day as the Choir Festival Vernon Hills, which is at 7:30 in the gym. If you've been to any of the festivals that we have, there will be no parking here. So what we suggest, what Denise and I talked about, is we could move the meeting that night over to District Office without changing the meeting date. So that's just something to think about moving forward. So I guess our recommendation at this point would be not to vote tonight. Let's just sit on it for a month, come back next month. We may find some other conflicts along the way. You may see something that doesn't make sense to you that we missed. And then we'll make a recommendation for you to vote on this next month. Is that sound good to everyone? Okay, great. Want to spend a couple minutes on Daybreak Farms and Meadowwood Subdivision detachment updates? I know I've been keeping the board updated either via email or through our committee meetings. At this point, for the public, the Daybreak Farms detachment is currently stayed, and it's on hold. As you know, we worked with legislators across the state last year to pass revised legislation on detachments, which set much clearer standards and what can and cannot be referenced in detachment hearings. So it was much more clear when they were appealed to court. The new law did not kick in until January 1st, although in the legal world, it's not, you know, what law was in place when it was initiated. know, what law was in place when it was initially filed, it's what law is in place when it's actually heard. So obviously, we're beyond January 1. So at this point, what's happening in these hearings is there's a motion by the Petitioners Council to hear the petitions that were filed before January 1 under the old rules. And then, for example, our joint council with the other districts that are involved will make a motion to hear it under the new law. They, the board, regional board will go into closed session. They will come out and the last few times they've ruled to hear it under the new rules. And so rather than have a hearing, okay, right away, it gives the petitioner's attorney an opportunity to go to court and actually appeal the board's ruling under which rules it should be heard under, rather than having a long hearing, which is not only time consuming, ours have been four to five nights over a number of months, but it has also saves everyone money because we're not trying to case twice, so to speak. So the Meadowwood subdivision is coming up. And if you remember Lancaster, which prevailed last year under the old set of, or I guess three years ago, under the old set of rules after all the appeals. If you've gone north in Oak Plain and you know where Lancaster is, literally across Oak Plain, the street, is a smaller depth subdivision called Meadowwood. They've also filed for detachment. That hearing is coming up on May 6th, or May 9th, Monday, May 9th. And we will follow the same protocol. The two attorneys, they'll make their petition, we'll make our petition, the regional board will decide, and then the hearing will be stayed until the court rules on which rules it has to be heard under because that petition was also filed before January 1. After January 1, there will be no question. But there is general recognition from council for detaching subdivisions that the new standards are clear. And it basically, it does really limit comparative data that can be used in those hearings. So that's what is coming up. Now, as a result of that, we have our May committee meeting scheduled for Monday, May 9. And then we were going to do after that, tentatively, the presentation on the pool proposal at Vernon Hills High School, if you recall from our last conversation. We'll need to move that meeting a week later. So if you could check your calendars, I can certainly follow up tomorrow. I think that would be Monday, the 16th, right? My math is correct? So if that will work for you, we would move the committee meeting, have the committee meeting, and then we'll start a committee, the whole meeting. And then John and his team will, you know, walk through a proposal that would be very similar to the pool proposal at that meeting. So is it, does that work for everybody, tentatively? Yes, yes. Because myself, Rita, and Yasmin will not be here. We have to be at the hearing up at the tech campus with the regional board on Meadowwood. Even though it might be relatively short, in the event the board decides to go ahead with a hearing, we will be offering testimony as part of that. So will that work for you guys? So we'll be, okay, so we'll be back to back in May then. So we'll do the Monday, the 16th, and then the following week. Denise, is that right? Is it the following week, the board meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Because then we run into Memorial Day. So thanks for that. So the detachments are on hold now. The last comment I would make is, the regional board usually meets once a month to consider these. They've had so many detachment requests, they've actually added several additional meetings, and this is one of them moving forward. So it's not, they don't, unfortunately, they don't all involve us, but there are other areas in the county that are seeking detachment from one school district to another school district. So it just seems like it's us and the other three districts that we're involved in. Capital Projects update. At this point, Mark has done a great job in, I guess we can do this in Brainerd together. Let me do Brainerd first. Mark has done a really good job of working with the village officials on the temporary padding during football season on the fences. It looked like initially that, you know, we would need to go to the board meeting. They've kind of taken it, the Village of Libertyville has taken it straight to the board level. We haven't had to go through appearance committee, we haven't had to go through zoning in order to do that. And so we were ready to attend their meeting tomorrow night. I think I talked to Scott, you know, to see if he was available. So maybe Pat. So at least we had one person. I think I mentioned at the committee meetings. But we got information from them today. We received their agenda. And it's actually on their omnibus vote agenda, which is their version of our consent agenda tomorrow. And they sent us a note and said that we did not need to be there. Mark's gonna follow through just to make a double sure tomorrow. But they also let us know that the administrative staff in the village supports our request. They understand that it'll, it's seasonal, it'll go up in August, it'll come down after the fall season out on the field moving forward. So capital projects, just to bring that back around. As you know, from our committee meeting last week, we got an internal committee, a smaller committee, that's working on pushing the pool proposal forward at this point, working with Mike and Sandra Moon and our architects on that and our pool designer. So we'll continue to move that forward. We do have, the RFP is, Yas, is that out already? The RFP for the construction manager? Okay. So that'll be out tomorrow after everyone's looked at it. We can begin to take a look at that project, get some more firm numbers based on the earlier estimate that we have, and then we'll be back to the board on that project. As we mentioned a couple of minutes ago, John and his team will be doing a proposal on the possible second gym at Vernon Hills High School. It will be much like the pool presentation. We'll have a presentation, we'll answer some questions. We've had a committee that worked on that probably two years ago, actually, to get ready for that. We've kind of held off on that, but we've asked Mike to update numbers on that. And again, you know, there will be some things that we can look at in terms of managing costs moving forward. North Chicago District 187, they, they have set a date, I think I mentioned at the committee meeting, for the State Charter School Commission hearing. Unfortunately for me, that is the same date as our retirement dinner. So I will be late to our retirement dinner because I will be testifying at that hearing. They are still negotiating to see if they can come to an accommodation. If they can, it'll be no need for a hearing. So if anything happens on that front, we'll move forward. Again, our district has sent a letter of support to the State Charter School Commission on that. There are a couple of things happening in Springfield that could have a positive impact. You have the school funding formula, which is in its current version, Senate Bill 2231, that passed out a committee last week. If some version of that were adopted, that would certainly help North Chicago probably, you know, a number of years out, which would take some of the initial pressure out. But given, you know, the climate in Springfield and the overall work that they're doing there, there's no guarantee that that bill will be passed out independently. Could be part of a larger budget agreement, but it's going to have to be looked at. We don't have the numbers from ISBE yet to see how each district would be impacted by that. And that's going to have a large impact on whether or not that bill moves forward. However, in this version of the bill, there are four full harmless years for districts like ours. So in the first year, we would be completely out harmless. Second year would be a percentage. The third year would be a, you know, a smaller percentage. The fourth year would be a smaller percentage. And then the next year would be the full impact of whatever a potential loss would be for a district. So until ISBE gives us those numbers, we don't know. But that, as Pat remembers from the large group meeting we had in North Chicago, that in itself would probably take care of them with some of the massive cutting that they're doing again this year. So we'll monitor that situation and I'll stay engaged with that. And Pat's part of a larger committee as well, representing the board. If that gets back together as well. Okay? Any other questions on North Chicago? Okay, I've got a couple of other things I just want to cover real quickly. First, we did an extensive update with the board on Writers Week at LHS and the staff with the main speaker. So I'm not going to repeat all that again tonight, but I do want to tell you on behalf of us that Marina did a great job of working with parents who raised concerns about the appropriateness of one of the main speaker's presentation in the first period that he presented. She's apologized on behalf of the building. I've apologized on behalf of the district. And we've said very clearly that what was covered in that first period presentation was clearly inappropriate and is certainly not supported by the administration. After Marina's intervention, the next three periods of his presentations went well. And so I think staff intervened at that level. He did what he was contracted to do originally. And we'll just continue to do our back work on folks that we bring in. However, having said all of that, it was a phenomenally successful, I think I can use that word, it was a phenomenally successful Writers Week. It's always really exciting at Libertyville during Writers Week. There was a special buzz in that building this week, and I can tell you from my own two daughters who go to school there, there was just kind of another world buzz about Writers Week this particular year and the whole Right Club movement that's kind of out there. And Dr. Fleming was in the action with a teacher where they did the Right Club. So we don't want to lose sight of the overall activity. It was phenomenal. We had one period that's clearly inappropriate. That was addressed. And had the speaker not been willing to do what he was contracted to do, he simply would not have been presenting the rest of the day. So I appreciate Marina's intervention in that. And finally, one really exciting thing I want to end the evening on, and then we can get on with the rest of the agenda. We want to let the board tonight know that District 128 is a finalist on a team of four other Chicago-area districts to win a portion of a $50 million prize offered by XQ Super School Project funded by Steve Jobs widow, Lorraine Powell, and launched in September 2015 as an open call to rethink and redesign the American high school experience. It is an open call to America's students, teachers, administrators, civic leaders, businesses, entrepreneurs, artists, and designers to meet the challenge of preparing our students for the future by dreaming, designing, and creating the new American high school future. The District 128 concept was developed by Dr. Rita Fisher and colleagues from four area high school districts. It is called GAIN Global Action Inquiry Network Academy. GAIN Academy has advanced to the third and final round of the XQ Super School Project. As a semifinal is chosen from among thousands of applicants stationed right, GAIN Academy has a 1 in 70 chance of being one of the five winning concepts that will each receive $10 million for development of the product, or a project among the five, in our case, the five, the four other districts and us. Winners will be announced in August. The vision for GAIN Academy emerged from the voices of students from five diverse Chicago-area high schools who were asked to help reimagine the high school experience. High school districts comprising GAIN Academy are, of course, District 128, Fenton High School District 100, Grayslake High School District 127, Leiden High School District 212, and Main Township High School District 207. District 128 students, including our board reps, Jolie, Zachary, Amelia, and Luke, and students representing several of the 10 high schools within the five districts, helped form the GAIN vision. Pretty exciting, huh?
It's pretty awesome.
During the interview, students clearly articulated the desire to work in a more focused, flexible environment, which would allow the pursuit of individual passions and interests while attending to global issues, goals, and solutions. The GAIN Academy mission will allow students to pursue their interests, collaborate within and beyond the school, and create unique solutions to rural problems as defined by the United Nations' Global Goals for Sustainable Development as they build disciplinary skills and conceptual understanding across disciplines. Students work in partnership with teachers and community mentors to master defined skills and interdisciplinary content through a flexible and interest-based approach in an innovative learning center called the CreSpace. GAIN Academy students graduate poised to develop their personal mission in post-secondary education and careers. If chosen as a finalist, GAIN Academy would exist as a school within a school at each of the five participating districts with collaboration existing between the various locations. So in other words, the other four schools that would be in our cohort, so to speak. So Rita, we want to thank you for your work on this. Do you want to mention very quickly some of the partners that we picked up in this process?
Sure. We are, we're working to add members to our team, and the College Board has already signed on. They're very interested in working with us. Our local reps have signed on for our team and are working with us. We're also seeking some, any of you as partners who would like to join us with your expertise. We've got some corporations who have products that are very much aligned with our proposal, including where we've linked to a career builder product called Find Your, Find My Calling, or Find Your Calling, that would help students kind of identify their individual calling and help them develop their own personal mission for post-secondary college and career. So we are expanding the network and we're really excited about this. And we think it has unique potential for, you know, a subset of students in all of our districts, the member districts that have signed on. We also have a lot of interest in our CADCA districts in the Chicago area. So it's a concept that we've designed to be replicable, that could easily be built in to each of the schools that might be interested in the future. So we think those are kind of the unique aspects of this proposal, that it's replicable, that it is attached to the United Nations' Global Goals, and it's something that doesn't require brick and mortar to a great degree for schools to enter into and join us down the road. It's exciting.
Okay. And just want to remind the board that we had eight FOIA requests this month and it's noted in your packet. So Pat, believe it or not, that is the end of the superintendent's report.
So is there more? That sounds like a pretty exciting proposal. I'm wondering if we have to put that on an upcoming P&amp;P and just do a slightly different document?
It is on the P&amp;P for our May meeting, and we shifted it, shifted the meeting date. So we just wanted you to be aware of it before you might hear something out in the news about our proposals.
And then one FOIA question. So my sense is the FOIA requests have become somewhat labor-intensive. And I know we, I know we have to do whatever people ask for, but a couple of those look like upcoming busy work category. Is there any, I mean, any legitimate way, in some cases, we can either push back or clarify what they want and try to reduce the administrative burden on those things, or?
We have tried in cash to ask them to be more specific about some of the...
Like the purchasing one, this is what the fishing expedition?
It is. I mean, we're doing it practically on a full month, so we're...
And what?
Purchase orders. It takes us a little while, but at least it's in our software systems to be able to extract it. And now we have the report. So it's just a matter of... Actually, it's a website that lists a lot of information, and the asking is of every school district friend.
We get these, when we get the global, and predominantly that's Denise and Alan Yasmin, depending on the context of the ask and what they're asking for. But we often get these from larger organizations, and they're just building a database of information. We have worked with Lynn on a number of these, and the good news with FOIAs is we're not, we don't have to create documents in FOIAs. So, you know, if they ask for information and we don't have a ready document, we don't have to make the document for that. But as I think all of you know from kind of following the flow from Springfield over the last couple of years, they've actually, you know, they've actually expanded, I guess, the ability of the FOIA and the Attorney's General's Office is over that. So whenever we've got questions, you know, we would be calling Lynn or Rick, depending on what it is, on the FOIA request. So there are, we do push back. In fact, you know, one of the FOIAs that we've had repeatedly over the last couple of months... In fact, you know, one of the FOIAs that we've had repeatedly over the last couple of months, we've pushed back a number of times, said you need a narrow request, this information we're not required to give you, we're not going to give you, okay? And so, we're going to provide what we have to provide, and then we're not going to provide what we're not required to provide. But it is, it is very time-consuming, and though there's a lot of conversation in Springfield on unfunded mandates, and I think there's a willingness to work on that as part of an overall budget deal, the area of FOIA, there is no support to kind of curtail that, unfortunately. And it's overwhelming. It is overwhelming. I mean, there are times it's overwhelming.
I don't sense that that would get better or not. You know, it's not that I'm trying to withhold it, it's just some of them just look like busywork, go-get, you know, things.
Some of the information shows on the website, it's a real list of technology agencies that suggest that they have to do the work, which they should.
And there have been many times where we just, you know, again, we just directed them to the website. You want our administrator's salary information, it's on the website.
Okay.
You want the bills for the month, they're on the website.
Okay. Any public people like to speak? All right. So, we'll move on. The consent vote agenda is listed in the committee earlier this month. Kindness for motion to approve the consent vote agenda, as listed, please.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? No. Roll call, please.
Arthur.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
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 Here's program and personnel chair, Womack Mauer.
Okay. We have first educational tour request. There are five listed, so we're looking for motion to approve those.
We're just approving five listed requests.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hanson.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
And next, we are looking to approve the employment of employees, agenda item, with a replacement hire and a support staff resignation. Do you need motion to approve that?
Move to approve. Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kelly.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
And we have no others for that, conclusion is this.
Okay. Facility plan, yes.
Okay. We have four bid recommendations to approve. We have to do these separate, or can we do them as one vote?
Separate.
Separate. For the dollar amounts, okay. The first one is the 2016 LHS Summer Abatement Project.
proposed motion by the Board of Education, that the Board of Education accept a bid from Nationwide Environmental and Demo LLC of Park Ridge, Illinois in the amount of $30,300 for the 2016 LHS Summer Abatement Project. This project is part of the domestic water distribution upgrades started last summer at LHS. The abatement of the project will be done in conjunction with the 2016 LHS Summer Renovation Project in the LHS Applied Arts Wing. The nine contractors attend a mandatory pre-bid meeting and received eight bids. Our abatement consultant from Professional Services Industries Incorporated, PSI, reached out to other consultants and confirmed that Nationwide can perform this project to our specifications.
Okay. We have a motion, please.
I make the move that we approve the motion to award Nationwide the bid as presented. Second.
Any further questions, comments, anyone? As mentioned, we reviewed this in our facilities and finance committee meetings, so we have a roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Arthur.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That motion passes. We have the 2016 LHS Summer Renovation, or...
Proposed motion by the Board of Education, that the Board of Education accept base bid from TUP contracting, Willbrook, Illinois, in the amount of $300,000, and reject alternate bid P-1 in the amount of $30,000 for the 2016 LHS Summer renovation work. The background of this project, this project replaces and upgrades the Applied Arts Wing, domestic water distribution infrastructure, hallway ceiling, and LED lighting upgrades. Also, hot water recirculation line will be installed in the Fine Arts Wing as well as hallway ceiling and LED lighting upgrades. Six contractors attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting and received four bids on the project. We have worked with TUP in the past, and we're happy with all the work.
Okay. Thank you. Can we have a motion, please?
I move to approve the summer renovation work as described.
Any questions or comments?
Hearing none. We have a roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Okay. The motion carries. We have number three on the list is the LHS Window Tinting Project.
Proposed motion by the Board of Education, that the Board of Education accepts the base bid from Glass Enhancements, Love Spark, Illinois, in the amount of $13,870, and alternate bid number one in the amount of $4,320 for the LHS Window Tinting Installation Project. This project requires installation of district-specified window film to be installed in 32 southern exposures second floor classrooms, as well as alternate bid number one, the cafeteria courtyard windows. The window film is being installed to reduce glare and solar heat transfer. We received six bids for the project. I spoke with Mr. Daniel Murdock, President of Glass Enhancements, who confirmed that the bid complies with specification of the bid package. I'm confident that they understand the scope of work. In addition, after checking references, we want to get big things to say about their quality of work.
Okay. Can we have a motion and a second?
We accept the bid of Glass Enh...
Any comments, questions from the board members? Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Aye.
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 And last but not least, LHS Studio Theater renovation.
Proposed motion by the Board of Education, that the Board of Education accept bid from TUP contracting, Willbrook, Illinois, in the amount of $122,000 for the Studio Theater renovations at Libertyville High School. This, the background of this project, this project is part of the LHS life study conducted in 2013, and will provide ADA accessibility to the LHS Studio Theater. Seven contractors attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting and received three bids. We worked with TUP in the past at both schools, and I'm happy with all the work they did.
I would also add that this adds some accessibility to sort of that rear entrance to the building in general. It just so happens to be that's where the Studio Theater is, so that'll be good news. Can we have a motion and a second?
I move to approve the LHS Studio Theater renovations as described.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? We have a roll call, please.
Aye.
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 And that motion carries. And anything for the other?
Just to clarify follow-up from the committee, so we're going to put the carpet replacement in the auditorium on a list, right?
Yes.
And then, if we could, at least at a high, yeah, and at least just a high level, maybe rough estimate, we had some conversation on the chairs for the Studio Theater.
Correct. And we've, we're contacting some buyers and giving some pricing for the...
And then we have additional follow-up on the lock, please, too, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, other?
What's that?
So, refresh my memory through the summer months here. What's the budget schedule, number one? Number two? Are we going to sort of game plan this potential property tax freeze then? We probably should, right?
Well, we're, the state legislators are off this week. Nobody's in Springfield. So, before they, that's okay. That's a good political statement. That was a true political statement. They usually take the last week of April off, and then May is, because they're supposed to have the budget done by May 31st. We know that didn't happen last year. We're hoping that it happens retro for '16 and also for '17. We're going to have a better idea when they're back in session next week, so the House passed the 0% property tax freeze, which means we can collect no additional revenue beyond the 2015 level without going to referendum, and that's a permanent tax freeze coming out of the House. Now, the Senate obviously has to approve that, and there will probably be some pretty vigorous debate on that. I know we've encouraged our superintendents in this area to talk to our state senators in our neck of the woods, that would be Terry Link in this area, and it would be Dan Duffy up in Libertyville, to let them know what the impact of a permanent freeze would be on local school districts, particularly those districts that don't have the tax base that we have, for example, although it would have an impact on us. So, Pat, in answer to your question, as soon as we get a better read on that, then, you know, yes, we'll need to look at game planning that.
Yeah. I mean, I guess my concern is we may or may not get a read on it, and I don't honestly know what the timing is, if there's some point beyond which that they could freeze taxes that would impact us next year. I don't know, but we ought to at least understand what those different scenarios are, okay?
Right. And what I can do is calculate.
I don't want to set a budget for next year and then come back in and say, oh, my goodness, we thought we were going to get revenue of X, and now we're going to get revenue of Y. So, we need to sort of if this, then that.
And I will have some information for you on the impact of the tax gaps and tax freeze. Also, what the projected CPI growth is, we have some information to help you an idea if in fact it goes up on the budget. I have all the budget requests at this point from all the departments. Unfortunately, it is a document you will not be happy with, so right now I have to go back in there and type it in.
Yeah. It's not a question of being happy or not happy, it's a question of living within our means.
It is not. It is quite an extensive process.
I mean, again, I just think we're getting closer and closer to having to deal with that, and I also think we have to understand that if all of a sudden property taxes do freeze, that's not business-as-usual kind of scenario, right? You can't just say, oh, well, and we'll just take that back, right? We need to at least have some hard conversations on, well, what options would we have, and which ones would we recommend, and which ones would we not?
I think I'm waiting now for that budget X conversation.
Yeah. We're going to have, we're going to have to have it.
That's what I'm trying to spin around here.
Yeah. No, it gets back to scenario planning, so.
Gets back to scenario planning.
Yeah. I mean, we don't need to execute that, but we might. I mean, again, to me, the abatement thing is almost separate.
I mean, actually, well, we've collected less money than we could have in order to push out of this, which is the main objective.
Well, remember, with the majority of the abatements, and Yasmin jumping there, with the majority of abatements, what we did is we actually abated the taxes and we used our reserves to pay off our bonds.
Basically, you did a bit of that.
Okay. We basically paid off our mortgages with our own money, okay? And so, that's how that worked, and then we did reduce the rate to $2.5 million or so.
$9 million.
$2.9 million to help the taxpayers in the area who we know are all dealing with, you know, very high taxes. And you might well ask me the question tonight, so, Karanis, you've been talking about a two-year property tax freeze for the last six months, which really the legislators have kind of walked us down that path. You need to prepare for, you know, a two-year property tax freeze, and now the property tax freeze is permanent, so what's the change? Well, that could well be negotiated down in the Senate. You know, there'll be some downward pressure to do that because you can't choke off revenue infinitum, and there are not many districts in this state that are going to be able to pass regular referendums on the revenue side. It's just not going to happen, not in a state that's so property tax reliant. So, there's a possibility that that will be squeezed down, you know, that it won't be permanent, but it becomes very problematic if you don't have any revenue because we're, every school district in this state has tied up the labor contracts, right? So, if we're capped at 0%, you know, that's a different conversation with the union. I mean, not only our union, but unions across the state, right? If you have no revenue coming in, so how do you manage expenses and revenue? So, there are a lot of catastrophic, you know, kind of tangents that go down that path, but I think there'll be a lot of pressure on that to bring that down to a more manageable number that everyone can live with. The other thing is the legislators are all up for election in November, and the number one thing they hear about in this state is what? Property taxes. So, you know, that's a pretty easy vote in an election year, right? They're up in November, you know, they can go out and say, I voted no on a property tax, you know, on property tax increases. The reality of that is you can't run any of the entities in the state that are funded by property taxes, with library districts, park districts, fire protection, you know, whatever's funded by property taxes, you know, you can't run over the long haul in the state, and most of the legislators, I can get that and understand that. But, you know, so we've been talking about a two-year freeze because that had been a conversation with, you know, a number of legislators. So, I was as surprised as anyone when that permanent freeze was voted in. The only good news in that is it's not a hard freeze in terms of that we can still capture new growth if you're in an area where you have some new growth, but I think Yasmin will tell us that the growth we've had in the last two or three years is not enough to fund, you know, our increase in expenses, so our revenue and our expenses meet, to go back to that conversation. So, the timeline is now ticking, and it appears that the one probably good news in this overall is that this was a bipartisan effort that was driven by lay legislators, not the leaders or the governor. And so, they worked in a bipartisan, bicameral basis on this really kind of independent initially of the leadership who kind of signed on at the end of the day. So, this could be a plank to get the trade-off started, to get the broader conversation moving, because there is a lot of work to do between now and the end of May moving forward. So, we'll monitor that, you know, very closely when the Senate goes back in, and I'll be talking to Senator Link and Senator Duffy this week, at least on our behalf, moving forward, so.
Right. And again, just to set the tone right, I don't want this to be it's a we versus they thing, okay? It's a we thing, all right? I think we all understand and agree that our goal is to live within our means, okay? And so, I think we want to know from you what your recommendation will be to do that, okay? And to the extent that that is not what you see, I'd like to know what you think we should do. Notice there were no they's in anything I just said. I'm not sure I can do that again unless I want to...
That was very good.
I mean, I think it's real important. I mean, it's not we that, I don't want to get into one of, you know, that's not what we're trying to do here, but I think we are trying to accept the reality of the future, which is going to be different than the past, okay? And we just need to start to deal with what that can do.
Does zero mean zero with no comprehension to inflation or CPI?
Zero means zero.
Which is unreasonable.
It is. So, Alex, if we want to go, if we want to, if we want next year's budget or our revenue to be higher than 2015, okay, then we have to go to referendum every single year.
Which one is it, Sam?
Go ahead.
So, what's...
The amount of cash you can flood out through recent...
Actually, I'm thinking, but I mean, probably, probably, I mean, I may have...
No, that's true, because once again, you're going to get into the depending on who...
You're going to be assessed.
...feels and who has different percentage.
But the money that we can collect, your assessment may go up.
Your assessments are different percentage, folks.
Right. But the amount that we can collect is capped at the 2015 level.
The amount that the taxing bodies can levy for, I believe, will be...
Yeah.
Whether you and I pay the same as we paid last year will depend on who moved the bubble because they appealed their taxes.
I think rate doesn't affect, it's still...
No, no. Go ahead.
Say it.
Well, we need to know, that is an important question, because going back to if they did freeze it and did do the abatement, now does that mean that you could pay in the $2.9 million? So, that's, that is something we...
When we did the levy this year, it was keeping in mind that the $2.9 million will be added to our tax base, so instead of using last year's extension as a base, which is normally how it is done, because the prior year was higher, the county could use the prior year as our base, which included a $2.9 million. So, we've already lost the $2.9, we've lost it as a... Right. We're using a higher extension base not to calculate that extension.
Yes.
So, again, just to make clear on the abatement, you know... So again, just to make clear on the abatement, you know, those taxes that we would have collected, we would have turned around and we would have paid our bonds down with those. That's by law, we have to do that. So had we collected eighteen five minus the two and a half, two point nine million, that money we would have collected and levied for because we were paying our bonds off, right? So that didn't mean we reduced people's taxes. So alls we did, alls you voted to do was we used our reserves to pay that off so we didn't have to collect that money from taxpayers.
We're not, I mean, that's done.
Right, exactly, exactly. The two point nine rate reduction, okay, given the tax rates in the area and the amount of taxes that even, you know, some of you are paying on the board, all of you are paying on the board, and those of us that are also living in a school district, you know, was an attempt to assist, give the taxpayers some relief because they've been really good to us moving forward. So that's kind of how that works. But it is, to Pat's comment, it's unsustainable over a period of time up for anybody that has a taxing body. I mean, it's property tax based, including schools. So again, I personally, and this is not a best guess, but I believe there'll be lots of conversation around that because superintendents around the state are talking to their senators this week and saying, look, here's the impact of this. Okay, now, we have talked to the legislators and said, look, CPI is so low, if you are going to do a two-year tax freeze, property tax freeze, just for two years, this is the best time to do it because inflation is so low.
See, it's semantics right now.
Right.
But this year, it doesn't matter.
Right.
But really, please
It does and it's something that's probably going to happen, but
The taxes are going out on May 2nd, it's too late to say now.
But again, that's why I wanted to understand this sort of thing, if they, you know, three months from now, four months from now, say, we froze your property taxes, but all the bills are already gone out and people started to pay, I don't know.
It probably means the next year, but
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at.
But remember here, that, you know, there's two other factors that go with the property tax freeze and one is the pension cost shift, okay, and two is a revision of the school funding formula. So those three things together are, you know, they'd be like a death knell. If you take the one message that we've consistently said to the legislators that we've testified about on at least three occasions, you know, many of us who have been down in Springfield to do that has been if you do a two-year property tax freeze, you cannot do the pension cost shift at the same time and you cannot revise a funding formula that's going to result in a district losing, you know, a million, two million, five million, 10 million dollars because all three of those things, you can quantify. I mean, it's very easy to do that. Yasmin, I ran those numbers a year and a half ago and we've updated them twice. I mean, for us, the property tax freeze and the pension cost shift in the form that's always been talked about, you know, is eighteen million dollar run-up just on the pension freeze over 12 years, on the pension cost shift. And even for a district like ours, that is, that will mean some pretty substantial financial work.
Okay, all right, so again, to Scott's point, we want to start doing some scenario planning because with all these capital projects that we're doing, it's a different, it's also a big driver of where we're at, okay?
And one more comment on the budget, Pat, just in fairness to the conversation, this is where we're at this time every year and then we set up another budget meeting. And so this is just an initial look, this isn't, you know, we haven't done any work, we haven't come back with the buildings and the major driver, just for the public, the major driver of our costs in the district, we're a service organization, so we're human. Most of our costs are human-driven costs in the districts, seventy, seventy-two percent of the cost of the district. So the building specific part of that, for example, is a pretty small number overall. We've done a lot of tweaking there, so yes, to your point, we're all on the same page, we're all going in the same
But at the end of the day, in your first pass, I mean, I understand the salary thing, that's on the contract, so, but I mean, did you get a lot of things that were called it outside of profile, the expectation was that payment?
No, it was basically the normal request and it was like
Well, when you asked for the normal, you asked for
No, but it was things that they had to identify as to why they needed in the classrooms or
Okay.
But when seventy, eighty percent of your budget is
Yeah, but we were looking at, I get that.
Right, so the twenty percent is what we do.
Okay, all right, so we'll see.
The other costs are manageable and again, just for the public, the board knows this, we've cut almost three million dollars out of the budget the last two years and we did one point six one year and one point forty the other year and we'll continue to work on that, so we're all on the same page.
Yeah, okay, all right, no
Any other other?
Yeah, sorry, I was still your caller, sorry, any other other? I should have just said, leave it to me. I don't think you're reporting.
Will I talk to
Okay. Anything else you have? All right, so no property, no seat all, no IASB, therefore, we're going to convene an executive session relating to employment of employees, five ILCS 120 slash 2C1. Yes, we will be taking action following that executive session.
Make motion that we go into executive session for reasons, Pat, listen.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Arthur.
Hi.
Nancy.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lucy.
Hi.
Lucy.
Hi.
That we reconvene into open session.
Second.
I
Hi.
Hi.
All right, so
I make a motion that we approve the notice to remedy for employee 2016-A.
Second. Any discussion? All right, if not, roll call, please.
Kelly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lucy.
Hi.
Lucy.
Hi.
Nancy.
Hi. All right, motion carries. No further business tonight, all right? All right, motion adjourned. So who? Second.
Second.
Roll paper.
Hi.
All right, thanks, good night, everybody.